Can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss some disciplinary issues and contract negotiations. We could all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Wendy Sampson.
Willow Bear.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moriarty.
Christine Beck.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Judy Kehoe.
Do we have any PIG students with us tonight? Welcome. Your obligation is to stay at the meeting tonight until it is over or nine o'clock, whichever comes first. And when you're -- we're done, you can come up and sign out. There's sheets up here, or if you guys need a signature, just see any of the board members. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the February 5th, 2020 regular Board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next, reports. Do we have anybody here with us tonight from the Student Senate? You want to come up to the microphone?
In regards to the backpack program, Hannaford has helped us out with food along with the Glenmont Food Drive that just took place. Along with that, there's a community fund Hawaiian night on Saturday that Kirsten, Murray, and I are going to attend to answer questions about the backpack program and talk about it, because they're a huge donor of ours. We also just had our snowball dance, which was before break, and we had around 500 kids attend. And lately, we've been working on passing clubs and voting on them.
Great. Thank you. Do we have anybody with us tonight from the middle school?
All right. Well, upcoming March events, our eighth grade will see Shakespeare's Comedy of Errors next week on Tuesday in our annual presentation by Shakespeare and Company. Our seventh grade Career Day is March 17th, and during this day, our seventh grade students rotate through presentations about various types of careers as a part of our Family and Consumer Sciences classes. All of our Coral students are getting ready for our B.C. Coral Festival on Thursday, March 19th. Our NYS ELA exams begin on Tuesday, March 24th. BCMS Student Council fundraiser, the Super Bowl, was a great success. We sent more than 25 boxes of food to the high school in support of our backpack program. And the donations of hygiene supplies helped to replenish our supply for students at the middle school. The middle school store model of hygiene supplies is open throughout the school year, and any student can go through the school with any adult member of the staff, and all items are free of charge. Lastly, BCMS celebrates March Madness with five spirit days on each of our Fridays. March 6th, Hawaiian Day; March 13th, Hat and Hoodie Day, proceeds of $1 benefit the Ronald McDonald House; March 17th, Green Day; March 19th, Western Day; and March 27th, Decades Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. A few things to report. I was able to attend AASAs National Education Conference the week prior to February vacation, a few days prior. There were several sessions that really aligned with some of our work in the district. One session I found particularly interested was -- interesting was -- had related to before and after-school elementary programs. It was presented by four different districts, varying size and demographics, and they discussed how they were offering before and after-school programs at all of their elementary schools for all of their students. The programs that they offered were aligned to the district goals. And one of the districts, which was very similar to us, had aligned all their programs to one of their goals of wellness, so all of their programs centered around overall health and wellness of students. So I thought it was very interesting. I have some contact information from that. There were also several sessions focused on social-emotional curriculum, which reinforced much of what we're doing. There were also several sessions on equity in education and what districts were doing to continue that work. So it was really a great conference. There were a lot of great keynotes, so it was -- it was interesting to go, and I learned quite a bit about some things that we could learn from. I also wanted to mention, we have had some inquiries about the coronavirus. We've had a couple calls, and we do have plans and policies in place, but we'll certainly, moving forward, take our lead from the CDC and the New York State Department of Health. School Start Time Committee. We had a meeting last night. Jonathan and Wendy were there as board representatives, and we had some great discussions. School Bus Consultants was there to present their work. They basically assured the committee that they felt confident with their work so far that we could move forward with an eight o'clock start time for the high school. And the high school and middle school would be starting at the same time. There'd be no change to the elementary schools. So the committee agreed that we should move forward with this plan. So the next steps would be, we have to meet with the staff, because it would change a little bit of the student day in the building, so we have a meeting set up for that, and then getting some communication out to families and making sure that we're on track. Obviously, if there's a glitch that comes up, the committee would need to reconvene to reassess that, but as of now, things look pretty good. So I don't know if Wendy or Jonathan, if you want to comment on the committee's work?
Well, the nice thing about it was that we started from very different viewpoints, and it was -- I wouldn't say that it was a compromise. I'd say that because of the work that was done and the investigative work of us consultants and the information that we've been able to gather, that we came to a consensus where everyone agreed it was a point in time where, unless, as Jody said, there's a road bump, that we can effectively do this, starting September. So even with the shortest of -- shortage of drivers, this is workable, and it will not increase the number of buses that we buy, and in fact, long-term may decrease the numbers we buy, depending on how the routing works.
I have a question. Did we -- in the meetings, did you talk about block scheduling at all? Because I know that there was a goal to possibly get more block scheduling for other classes besides science at some point in the future, where you could have like a Monday-Wednesday or not going every day as part of homework reduction. Davy looked like you were...
How does that...
That's a separate discussion from the school start time, but that is something the supervisors, now that we have the new times, that is something that we would investigate.
But it wouldn't affect the start times or anything? Would not affect that in any way?
You'd still operate within that same window.
Okay.
It's the same length of school day. It doesn't change the school day. It just starts at later for the high school.
Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just thought that the meeting went very well, and as Jonathan noted, we did move from some positions that were very different in the beginning of the process. And, you know, just moving forward, I'm sure that, you know, anything we do is not going to please 100% of the people in the community, but we feel that we are doing what's best for our school students and for our community without, you know, jeopardizing the health of other students in the system as well. So it's -- it might be a compromise for people who wanted to have a way-later start time, but it just was not going to be feasible, you know, at this moment in time. That's not to say that maybe five or 10 years down the future, you know, you couldn't look at that again, especially if more districts in the area are doing it. You know, that might be something to move forward on in a couple of years.
I thought it was a -- from where we started, we definitely made some good progress. And aside from, like I said, if there's anything that we haven't anticipated, I think that we're on track to make some of those changes for the fall.
And so the high school would start at eight, and so eighth period would end at...
That's what we have to work at, logistics of it, because everyone was in agreement since the beginning that the after-school time was really important.
Okay. And there still would be a ninth period built in?
There's still be late buses and...
And all that, okay.
Right, yeah.
Would the kids who play sports have the -- still the same opportunity to see teachers after?
That was part of the discussion as to why the three o'clock, you know, that going further than that would be tough.
That's why we ended up starting at eight rather than trying to go for 8:30 or something like that.
Right.
Because right now, it's not possible. But as Brooke said, he was the school bus consultant representative, he did say that there were other schools. There was one that they were working with now.
Gilderlin.
Gilderlin.
And Niskiun, I believe, they're starting to work with.
Right. So we do have other schools in the suburban council that are looking to do this and looking to do this for next year. So we're not -- one, we're not alone, and two, if there's a -- enough of a -- a large enough group of us, it's going to lead the way for sports to change if that's what's going to happen. So it's not going to diminish sporting activity for anyone or after-school activity.
I'm not worried about the later start time for the sports. I was just more worried about, so if school gets out at 2:10 and they're going now till 2:50, you know, if you're starting half an hour later?
Was it 2:31, was it on the slide?
Something around that time.
There's still different scheduling models we're looking at, but we're looking at compressing passing time, compressing a homeroom potentially.
So it wouldn't be a full 30 minutes?
Instead of 43-minute periods, it might only be 42-minute periods, so that we still can preserve that after-school time.
Okay. Because I'm just worried if it's going to get compressed, the kids need to get on a bus to get to a sporting event, they're not going to have that same amount of time.
Yeah, so we looked at that as one of the meetings we have looked at, when the after-school buses had to leave for away games. We looked at how many times would kids lose time, and it's very minimal. If you think about one season, the number of times that students have to leave before three o'clock is very minimal. It's a handful of times. So we actually looked at that earlier in the process.
Yeah, just to make sure, like, coaches are aware that they can't start practice before.
Right, right.
I just want to thank everybody who was on the committee, because it's amazing how this came together. When I -- this process had started, it was something that I assumed would take a very long time, and the fact that, you know, parents were able to advocate, administrators were listening, and we were able to get the bus route plan together. It's pretty impressive that it came together, this time period, and I think it's going to be a great thing for the high schoolers going forward.
Thank you. So we'll keep you updated, but that's where we are at this time. That's my report.
Anybody have any other questions for Jody? Next on the agenda is the Board Report. First, I just wanted to acknowledge that I know we've received a number of comments and some feedback on the proposed mobile device policy, and I would recommend deferring our discussion until that point on the agenda. That way, we have a chance to hear any additional comments that we get this evening. Tuesday, March 3rd, next week, is the BOU Spelling Bee. I recommend anybody who is available in the evening to come by. It's a lot of fun and a great cause. And then I know there was a Facilities Committee meeting since our last meeting, so I don't know if either of you guys or Wendy would like to report out on that.
The -- we met, and you now have a giant stack of change orders to sign, because we did our work. Now, the changes are, you know, dollar-wise minimal compared to what we were looking at before. Everything looked reasonable. There were some surprises to things they have found behind ceilings or a -- they described to us a pristine copper ductwork that was done god knows how many years ago, but it's not usable, and they can't take it out, so we're covering it up again for somebody else to find. But the work is going along, and I think that -- that with the -- I'd say with the exception of, you know, some delays here and there, I think it's doing well.
I didn't need to add?
No, just with the conversation on the cellphone policy, that if anybody here in the audience wants to talk about it, to speak up about it, things on an agenda item, they don't have to wait for us to discuss it.
Anybody have anything else to add or report out on?
The -- let's see, two things. One, there was Caper at Hammergrill, which was an awesome event. Mr. Caper does a wonderful job running that. And second of all, the Hammergrill lip sync was right before break. It's an incredible event that I can't even imagine how many hours it takes to organize, but it went really, really well, and I think the kids had a great time.
I don't have anything.
Holly, one other thing. The Lab School BBQ is Saturday, March 7th. Get your tickets. You don't want to miss it, and it's -- you don't have to go all the way out to Brooke's BBQ. They're coming here.
And there's a vegetarian option.
Yes, there is.
Sells out quick.
Anybody else? Next is our presentation this evening from Judy Kehoe, Cindy Jurwitz, and Ray Nardelli on our Budget rollout, transportation, and technology.
I know this probably feels late to you for the kickoff of the budget. We started at the last meeting with Ms. Monroe's State of the Schools address, and that was a great way for us to tie together all of the goals and plans that we're working towards. As we go through the next few weeks of reviewing the budget, this is where, of course, we make sure that we have all the financial resources to make sure that we can accomplish the goals that have been laid out for the district. I'm going to kick off the discussions this evening. I want to give you a general overview of the state aid situation and where we are with our revenues and our expenditures for the baseline budget before we then roll it out to transportation and to technology. The governor's budget had been released several weeks ago. We've had some time to go through and analyze the figures. There were many familiar elements to his proposed budget. I want to emphasize that they are proposed until the budget is finally adopted. We really won't have a final sense of what to look for in terms of its impacts to the district. But some of the common themes, I thought, were worth emphasizing. The state, of course, has their own fiscal woes, and they are trying to limit growth in certain expenditure categories. And what they've seen from schools across the state has been some more significant growth in both transportation and in building aid. So it's really not too surprising that his proposals have included restrictions on that. For transportation aid, essentially, the proposal is to limit the growth in that aid to 2% or along the lines of inflation. For building aid, there is a new tier of aid that is proposed, and there are certain limitations in terms of what types of things will be covered. And since we're starting to have some requests and conversations about everybody else is going forward with synthetic turf projects, you know, what does that mean for the district potentially with the next capital project? I wanted to highlight that there are new restrictions on athletic facilities within the proposal, and unless you can make the case that that facility is necessary for the physical education program, the state would not aid that. So that could be significant in terms of impact to the district if something like that were to be included in the next round of capital projects, and this is passed. You can still do the work, but it would mean that a larger share of the costs would be borne by the local community. The other proposal was a new way of looking at foundation aid. It essentially is repackaged in the governor's proposal, and the way it's repackaged is they took a number of other expense categories, such as BOSI's aid, and rolled it all up into an adjusted foundation aid line. And I'll go through a detail and explain that to you so you can see what the impacts are to us in an upcoming slide, but it really doesn't result in any tremendous increase to the district in our foundation aid. The net amount is actually up less than 0.4%, which isn't tremendously helpful in the budget. You've heard me say time and time again that the number-one lesson that all school board members need to know is that when the state aid runs come out, they almost never reflect the numbers that we ultimately will be receiving. And this year, it was particularly evident. It looked like we had a $780,000 reduction in our aid. This is not correct. As I had noted at an earlier board meeting when this first came out, not wanting to instill any seeds of panic in the community, the state changed how they reported building aid. So the reason for that reduction is that because we haven't finished our project, and therefore, we haven't filed our final cost reports, the governor's aid run did not include the aid that will flow to the district once the work is done and those reports are submitted. So I needed to make a manual adjustment to those aid run totals, which I have done and which will be included in the state aid totals. So the $6.9 million building aid number that is reflected in our baseline number is that adjusted number. We did have a number of changes within the building aid. We had a large section, almost $1.2 million in building aid come off of our scheduled aid, based on one phase of work from the $93 million bond many years ago. That came off, and what is coming on then is about $1.4 million in aid on the new project. Coupled with, we did have a slight increase in our building aid ratio, about 1%, so that is in fact resulting in an increase in the building aid. Another thing that you've probably heard in the local media about the governor's budget, there seem to be discussions about shortfalls in the aid that is promised to school districts. And this all relates back to almost 10-some years ago with the Campaign for Fiscal Equity, which came up with a new way to distribute foundation aid to school districts. And if that foundation aid were paid to Bethlehem as per those formulas, the number on the bottom of the slide is what we would have received. So for instance, last year, we would have received $17 million in foundation aid. We only received $12.8 million. So about a $4 million gap from what otherwise would have flowed to the district. If you look to this year's number and you look to the foundation aid total, it appears that that aid gap has dropped significantly. We are at $16 million in foundation aid on the governor's aid runs versus 17.4 million. But in fact, that gap has not shrunk at all. If you look at what the state is now calling our pre-adjusted foundation aid, or an apples-to-apples comparison of foundation aid, we would -- we're getting $12.9 million. So you can see, there's still about a $4.5 million gap. So I tell you that just so that you're aware, if you're hearing these discussions on the gap is shrinking. It's not shrinking. It's just a new way of presenting that information. And at the end of the day, what we get is what we get. It's what is approved, and we make it work with our totals, but that's just a little background for you on how that works. We're relatively stable in the other aid items, including the transportation aid. So if anything else is awarded, we'll be able to adjust this total in the coming weeks, and if not, what we have in the baseline is that $17.4 million. The tax cap calculation, the -- it is a formula. It is not 2%, as is often reported. On that 2% is related to the allowable levy growth factor, where we can increase our levy amount from the prior year based on the lower of 2% or the rate of inflation. Because inflation is at 1.81%, we are at the lower number. So that does yield a significant increase in the levy per the formula. That's just under $1.2 million additional tax revenue that we can generate. Our tax base growth factor was the 0.82%. That yields about $550,000. You'll see in our total revenue numbers that we have more money flowing to us from the payments in lieu of taxes. When we get more money in the pilots, it means you can levy less in taxes. The capital exemption also reduced, so the number for Bethlehem this year is 2.34%, a nice, easy-to-remember percentage. And that is the amount that we can increase the levy without needing to go to a supermajority in the community vote. So we would just, if it's adopted at that level or below, we would need a simple majority for the budget approval. So for the budgeted revenues, as we go into the baseline amount, the school tax line, we keep at last year's number. We don't want to make any assumptions about what we need at this early point in the budget. So once we go through and look at additions and reductions and evaluate whether we have any state aid increases to factor in, we can come up with what that final tax levy will look like. The pilot payments reflect that which is scheduled to come to us. The state aid is as per the last worksheet that I just reviewed. And then all other revenue, a series of miscellaneous items, relatively flat with last year's number. So going into the baseline, we're at 101.9 million in revenues. On our budgeted expenditures, broken out by the types of items that we spend money on, the baseline budget is up 3.14%, up to about 103.9 million. As you would expect, about 74% of our budget relates to salaries and fringe benefits, because that's what we do. We provide services. Debt service is also a significant component of the budget, even though a large amount of that is aided on the revenue side with building aid. That's at about 12%. And then the all other elements are at about 14%. So in the coming weeks, we'll go through those details as that relates to all the different departments, and we'll drill down a little bit deeper into those numbers. Because fringe benefits is close to 23% of the total budget, we always like to give you a little extra detail on what is included in those numbers. The health insurance numbers are better than we had expected. That net increase is only 0.35%. The reason for that is that we actually are coming in below budget in the current year. We're coming in closer to $12.9 million. So if you look at our projected actual for this year, with the increase in our premiums, the net increase, or the blended increase rather, on our health insurance renewal is about 3.8%. So that yields the $13.5 million in the health insurance numbers. TRS, ERS, that's our Teachers Retirement System and our Employees Retirement System pension amounts. Those rates are set by the state and are applied as a percentage to our covered payroll. We're up slightly on the TRS at 0.67%, raising it to almost a 10% premium rate, and then the ERS stayed flat. FICA, Medicare, workers' comp, all of the other statutory benefits are in there as well. The net increase is only 2.6% on the fringe benefits. Our debt service, this is something that we've been working very closely with, with our financial advisors, particularly as we have older projects coming off of our state aid runs. We have older projects that have reductions in the amounts of debt service, and as we're bringing on a new project, we want to do all that we can to keep these two elements relatively level. Not only does it affect our total budgeted amounts, but it also affects our tax cap calculations and stability. calculations and stability helps us when we're presenting these items and trying to manage the budget. So the only thing new really is we did update our estimated debt service for the current capital project. We have only borrowed about half of the money. We've factored in the 525,000 for this year is the interest cost on the bond anticipation note that's outstanding now. As we come into the home stretch with the project, we'll issue the remaining amount of that debt. So the 739,000 represents the principal and the interest on that financing for the construction work. This breaks out all of the budget areas, the same 1.03.9 million budget by the various areas that we're going to be covering in the next few weeks. So tonight, we'll cover the administrative budgets, transportation, technology, and then the fringe benefits and debt service that I just covered. And then we'll roll into the remaining areas in the next two budget presentations. We started including these next three slides just so that you could have your eyes on all of the other district-wide administrative costs that we incur within our budget. So these numbers reflect the services provided at a central level to all district-wide staff. So for instance, the business office, human resources, all of those things that serve the entire district are included here. And there really aren't any significant changes to highlight in these totals. Again, it's presented just so you have an idea of what's included in those district-wide administrative totals. It also includes things like our independent audits, internal audits, legal services, insurance, and the other items listed on there, as well as our continuing ed and driver's ed programs, which have offsetting revenue items included in that other miscellaneous category on revenues. And then our transfers to other funds for things such as our extended school year special needs program that runs during the summer. And then our capital outlay, which you'll hear more about next week in the O and M budget. So in total, those miscellaneous areas have increased about 3.4% from the prior year. So when we concluded the budget presentation last year, I always give you the crystal ball projections of how does our future look in the coming budget cycles? And this is where we project out known amounts and we make assumptions on tax levies. Last year, we had identified that this was going to be a tighter budget year for us due to the timing on the capital project aid coming in and debt service costs coming in. So we had projected that would go into it with about a 1.9 million gap between our revenues and expenditures and that we would have to work to close about a $600,000 gap.
So on a $100 million budget, you were off by 100 grand?
It was worse than last year. I think I was within 60,000 last year, but anyway, yes, that is correct. So it's a reasonably good projection. And the reason we do it is so we make sure that there aren't any freight trains coming down the road, you know, things that are going to create issues for the district finances. So yes, the projected number, if you look at our baseline revenues of 101.9 and compare that to the baseline expenditures, we have a gap of about $2 million. And I've noted on the right side of the slide, the types of things that we still need to look at in order to close this gap. So you know, the object of the entire review process is to come up with a reasonable and a balanced budget. We're going to get there. We will just have a series of choices to make as we go through that. So we will be looking at reductions and additions from the various departments. We will be applying breakage. That's the differential between salaries from staff who are retiring, who are retiring at a higher salary level. And as we hire their replacements, they come in at the lower levels on the salary scale. We call that breakage. And the retirements keep coming in. So I don't have an exact number of the breakage yet, but we're estimating that will be somewhere in the range of 450,000 to 525,000. So I'll have that updated for you in March, based on what we know at that time. That will be a big piece that will help us close this gap. Depending on what we do with the tax levy, I've listed the range of 1.3. If we were to go with a 2% levy up to the maximum allowable tax levy would be just under 1.6 million. So those two items combined get us very close to closing the gap. And then I'll continue to fine tune some of the other estimates in the coming weeks as well and see if we can find some money that will allow us to fund the other requests that you'll hear about in the next few meetings. So that's the general overview. And if you don't have any questions, I'll-
I have just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
When does the $93 million project debt service payment end?
There are several sections that get paid off at different times, but in its entirety, it will be paid off in 2037. So we have a few years to go.
Yeah. Will we see a reduction from the 8.6? Like, when will we first see a decrease at least in some of that?
You're going to start to see some reductions, I believe it's in the next fiscal year. I have the schedules of all of that. I don't have it memorized though in terms of that. So that's in the annual audit report.
Okay.
But I can get you that information and show you.
Okay. I just wanted to get an idea when we see some.
So yeah, you'll see some reduction. Well, I don't have it memorized. You don't have it memorized?
I don't.
So yes, there's a chunk falling off next year, then it plateaus for a few years and then it drops from there.
And then just on the last slide, 15 and 16. So I was looking at the multi-year budget forecast where you have the revenue excludes the levy increase.
Yes.
For some reason, I wasn't getting the numbers to come up. So I just wanted to know if maybe the 99, 843, if you were to add the levy, didn't come into the 101, 913 unless my mental calculator doesn't work?
That revenue doesn't include the total tax levy. That's the total revenues with the flat levy from the prior year.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We assume 2% of the actual levy amount. And then as I roll into the successive years, I add in that 2% amount and then calculate 2% of that adjusted total.
Okay.
Total rolls forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
So moving forward to transportation, tonight, we have Cindy Durovic, our Director of Transportation, doing this presentation. I did want to highlight, tonight is her final budget presentation for the district because after 18 years of working in the Bethlehem Central School District, she is retiring this June. So I did want to thank her for sharing her passion for transportation with us over the years and I hope she really enjoys her final budget presentation.
So do I. Thank you so much. And hello, everyone. Welcome to the transportation budget. Yeah. So the first slide that we have up here is the transportation budget overview. And you can see for the 2019, 20 and the 2021 school year, the difference is in there. I just want to point out a few of them. The first one is the salaries. You'll see that in the upcoming school year, we're a little bit lower, but that's due to the loss of five drivers. And as Judy was talking about, the breakage, when you retire and then you bring in new drivers, it's a lower salary. We'll talk about the driver shortage a little bit more because it's really prominent and how it's affecting us. The other thing that I wanted to point out here, if you go down to the other operating costs on here, you'll see that in the 2021 school year, we're up about $50,000, give or take a few. And that has to do with the school bus consultants. And the work that they've already done are continuing to do and will most likely transition into next year. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. Other than that, you'll see that the part-time cleaner is also in our budget here, added five-hour custodial worker there. The next slide is going to show the salary and positions for transportation. So what I really want you to notice is that the drivers and the bus attendants, which don't include substitutes up there, the number is the number of employees, not how many are full and part-time. Because most of the folks in transportation consist of bus drivers and bus attendants and they are not full-time folks. Where four hours, some are five hours. So they go by numbers rather than full-time, part-time kind of thing. The other thing that I want to point out here is the supervisors and the office clerical work there at 4.5. We have four supervisors in transportation for the amount of folks that we have. The .5 is the clerical, which we'll be talking about in another slide as well. But what you should know here in the supervisors is out of the four, we have myself, the director, Mr. Bizik, who is with us, there he is, right behind me, is my assistant. We have the fleet maintenance supervisor in there. And then we have a supervisor for the dispatcher and drivers and attendants out in the office area. That position is currently vacant and we'll talk about that as well. When we come down to the extra hours and overtime, what I would point out to you is even though it says overtime there, most of the hours for our folks are not overtime in that they're not one and a half. It's just extra work and we consider that overtime. Does that make sense when I say it that? So it's extra pay, not actually time and a half. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about the driver shortage. This is not something that's exclusive to Bethlehem. It's not something that's exclusive to the capital area, even New York State. It's actually a nationwide problem. So what is causing it? What are some of the effects of it? Well, first thing you want, I wanted you to know about the driver shortages is that there are CDL qualifications that are increasing, most at the federal level. And in 2022, we're going to see another huge change in the CDL requirements for bus drivers. And that's going to unfortunately not help the driver shortage as it lengthens the amount of time and makes it a little more difficult to get drivers. So that's not helping us out. Couple that with the second bullet there that really is speaking to the fact that, you know, bus drivers and attendants have a split shift, which they know that coming on. They'll work a morning shift, work an afternoon shift. But all in all, four hours a day really isn't enough for somebody who's trying to make a career out of it to live on. We have growing competition with contractors in between districts. So when you talk about contractors out there, Durham and First Students, some of those folks, they're giving their drivers seven, eight hours a day and they're working them 12 months. So when we're trying to hire drivers, we're competing with that kind of. Their rate of pay might be a little bit lower, but when you add in that they're seven or eight hours and they go 12 months, that's a draw for some folks. Between districts, we're fighting for drivers as well. And also know that we're not even in the spring sports season yet, but once we get there, then there's a competition because we do have a line item for coach buses if we need to contract buses to take our kids to sporting events and stuff like that. But they're very hard to come by. Shen has booked up almost all of them. So that doesn't help us. So how do driver shortages affect Bethlehem and what are we going to do to address it? Well, first thing that I want you to know is I just want to give you a few numbers. For drivers and bus attendants, sub-drivers and bus attendants, in the 1819 school year, we had 10 substitutes. This year, we have six. For attendants, in the 1819 school year, we had nine substitutes. This year, we have two. We're down five drivers since the beginning of the school year through retirement. And on a daily basis, I'm covering long-term five other drivers. That's 10 routes a day before anybody else calls in sick. That's a lot. What are we doing about it? Well, on a daily basis, we're taking routes apart and we're piecemealing it. We're giving somebody a route over here to try to fit in between maybe a high school and an elementary run. We have extra things in the middle of the day, like, you know, sports trips going out. We'll have mechanics take them out. They're off the clock, one way, and then go pick them up afterwards. We're often late getting to schools now because we're trying to fit these in between existing runs already, little things like unified bowling. We drop the kids off, we're squeezing it in between. So, and the principals have really been great about being very patient with us, but this is the kind of shortage and this is the kind of effect that it is having on us. And we're not even into spring sports season yet. So how can we, what do we need to do to change it? Well, we have been talking about it and it is a nationwide shortage. And we need to look at school bus driving as a career path. So how do we do that? How do we reach people and how do we make it a career path? I've checked with some of the other districts in the area and they do different things than we do. North Colony, for example, and Gilderland both. While we're all pretty close in our starting rates of pay, North Colony is a little bit higher at $21 an hour and some change to start with. But when their folks get a contract, they go right into six hours a day. And they have benefits. When we bring our folks onboard, they normally start as a sub and that's pretty typical. Then they go into possibly a PM-only run, which is 10 to 15 hours a week. Then they might jump up to four hours. And after a few years of seniority, they might get higher, four and a half, five hours a day. Gilderland right now is taking people in off the street and giving them six hours right away. That's how bad the driver shortage is. We are having the school bus consultants helping us with this, taking a look at it to see how we can work and come up with some creative ideas on how to handle the driver shortage. So here's some good news. Transportation is largely funded with state aid. And if you take a look at these numbers, you'll see that we went from 6.44 in state aid last year or this year, up just a little bit to 6.55 for next year. And see the sale of our buses and the revenue that transportation brings in? $100,000 last year. Mr. Bizik does a wonderful job at putting our buses out there for auction. Our mechanics take such great care of them. We have repeat customers wanting to buy our buses. So when you take a look at all of this, I think the most important thing is that including bus sales, total transportation revenues are about 83% of expenditures. I think that's pretty good for the department. Pretty good for the district. So as we look at transportation program review in 1920, and also this really goes into the 2021 school year, we have an ongoing review with school bus consultants. They started off with the bell timing, but they'll also be working with us and looking at our routing, our fleet management, technologies that we may or may not have. What's not listed here and what they will be looking into is the feasibility of electric buses and what that looks like. More information coming on that. And with my retirement coming up in June, as Judy had already mentioned, they're going to help us begin with the recruitment and interim using some of their folks to help make the transition smoother. So what do we look like and what are requests are we asking forth for the 2021 school year? As I had mentioned earlier, we have a current vacancy in the assistant transportation supervisor provision, position, and that's up roughly $70,000. We look to propose to get rid of that for this next coming school year, the supervisor position, add a routing specialist for about 55,000. The clerical, right now, our clerical is 15 hours a week. And we need to increase that because it's just, the work is there. She's putting in a lot of extra hours. And we have a line item for extra help for her for 10,000. And if you reduce fringe costs by 3,000, if you look at the net cost, if we- if we get a routing specialist and we add hours to our clerical, and we leave the Assistant Transportation position vacant for this year, it would be a net cost of zero. So that's what we're looking at to propose. Did you want to add anything to that, Judy?
Just that we would propose to abolish that position this year. If you can repeat that.
Okay, so Judy asked me to just repeat that we're proposing to abolish that position for this year, to replace it with this, and then look to maybe fill that in the years coming. So this is an overview of the bus fleet as it stands right now. You can see that we have a total of 132 vehicles, ranging from our largest part of our fleet being the large buses, which consist of either 66, 72, or 48 passenger buses, 92 of them. The smaller buses, about 37. And included in that are the wheelchair buses, and then Suburbans. The next column over will tell you the useful life replacement. So our replacement for buses is about nine to, is a 10 to 12-year life cycle. The nine comes in sometimes with the smaller buses because we do travel so much, and there's so much mileage put on those. So we look at the ideal number of buses to replace each year for each of those categories. Which brings us into our next slide that talks about bus replacement plan, need versus purchases. And you can see that way back in 2012 and 13, there was a huge gap between the buses purchased and the buses that are needed. We are starting to level off, and with the help of SBT and what we're doing in the department, looking at the fleet, we're hoping to level that off by '22, '23. So what does our proposal look like for this year for buses? 13 replacement buses, not to exceed roughly 1.2 million. We're looking at six large buses, and you can see the years of those buses. The average years of service is about 13, so we're above the replacement already for those. And average miles, about 73. We try to get upwards of 100,000 miles, but that's just an average. We're looking for six large buses and seven 30-passenger buses with an average of 10 years' service. And like I said before, the smaller buses usually go out of district and put more miles on. So they're really up around the $100,000 mile, or 100,000 mile range. Out of those seven passenger buses, five of them would be the regular small buses, and two would be wheelchair buses. But know that when we do order the wheelchair buses, we order them in such a way that they have tracked seating so that if one year I need another regular bus as opposed to a wheelchair bus, I can put seats in. If I don't need them, I can take them out. So they're very versatile in that respect. Also know that, as you're aware, I'm sure, that the purchases are treated like any other capital asset, purchasing requiring board approval, and then they will go out to public vote. Questions?
I'd just like to do much.
Start by thanking you for your presentation and for your service to the district.
Thank you so much. I've enjoyed it. It's been a very pleasurable time and an honor to be working here. Thank you.
I did one quick question, too.
Cindy, thank you, too, for your service. With the potential for starts to go later, I know, did you discuss this initially? Would there be more buses that we would need to purchase before next year?
No.
Okay, just consolidating routes, and we would be able to accommodate?
So there could be more routes, but not necessarily in need. There's a difference between more routes and more buses. So they're confident we do not need more buses. But there might be a few more routes, depending on their final analysis.
Okay. Just listening to Cindy's presentation, I was a little concerned with, if we have a shortage of drivers, and they're already consolidating and looking at ways to move everybody around, how would we get everybody to the middle school and the high school at the same time? It doesn't sound, Cindy, based on what you're saying, would you see a potential issue with this, just without the consulting?
I haven't been in the meetings with John Hassel. He might have more of an insight on that. He's been at those meetings. But school bus consultants have looked at our routing, and they're continuing to do that. And they assure us that it can be done.
And I just wanted to clarify also, because you made a comment, but I don't want it to slip through the cracks, that we'll be getting some more information down the road on what electric buses would look like.
Yes, yes. They're looking into that and getting more information. Electric buses are very new at this point in the game. So, you know, infrastructure has to be looked at, cost differential has to be looked at, operational needs have to be looked at. So yes, they're looking into that.
Thank you.
Cindy, recently, in Germantown, there was a bus rollover. And on the national news, I saw a video clip from-
In Ohio, yes.
In Ohio, yes, where the students, the bus flipped, rolled over, and the students were tossed around like, I don't know what to describe it as, but it literally looked like they were just being tossed around like rag dolls. I understand that New York State requires we have seat belts.
Correct.
They do not require that we enforce use of the seat belts.
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a different, what is the cost to put the three-point belts in? And I ask because the driver, who had a three-point belt on in Germantown and in the other crash, came out relatively unscathed as opposed to some of the students who came out much more, with greater injuries?
Right. So John did come away with that question last night, and we actually had our bus vendor from Matthews this morning there with us. So I'm going to turn that question over to John, because he has that information for you.
And before you go, thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Good evening. Essentially, to make this pretty easy, what I did is, I took the current proposal for the six large buses and asked Matthew Buses, who we get our buses from, to please give me an idea of what type of cost difference would be between the current proposal and if we had three-point harnesses. Per each bus for a three-point harness, our expenditures would go up about $9,500 per bus, or essentially almost $57,000 for the bus purchase. That's if they're installed at the factory. If we went back and we did retrofit to all our buses, we would be looking at a cost of about $13,601 per bus, or essentially $1.2 million to do the entire fleet.
And given that there's no requirement that they be used and no way to enforce it?
Right.
The question is-
It would be a question of how would we do that? In the past, during some of the board meetings, some of the suggestions had been, you know, put monitors on the bus. We could do that, but monitors, we do not get state aid on monitors. So we would have to have that expense in addition to salaries, in addition to benefits. So that would also increase our expenditures.
Given how tight the budget is, I'm not sure that we would be considering it for this year, but I think it's something the board should consider for future years. And also to have a discussion at a future meeting about how we can encourage parents to have their kids wear these belts. One way, I think, would be to show parents that video that was on the national news, if they haven't seen it, of these children being thrown around like rag dolls. It's scary.
Would there be, would they use the seat belts more if they were three-point harness, or three-point belts that were installed on buses going forward with new purchases?
I think that would be a hard question to answer. I think we would see the same number of students wear them now, whether they were three-point or not. Our drivers do encourage students to wear the seat belts. But again, there's no way for the driver to pay attention to the road. Obviously, you drive the bus and then monitor the students. So I'm not sure how we would do that.
Is there any studies out there that indicate why students? Because if I have students that are in my car, or they put on the seat belt automatically. So what makes it different when they get on the bus?
Number of students that you have to monitor? It's just a guess to me. I, you know, I have three children, and we get in the car, I don't leave until they're all buckled in. But on the school bus, it's a little bit different. The high backs of the seats make it literally impossible, at least at an elementary level, to see a lot of the students if they're buckled into their seats. So you really wouldn't be able to see that.
Well, I'm not saying from an elementary level. I'm talking middle school and high schoolers that get on the bus that they, it's habitual to put on their seat belt. Is there, have you ever seen any studies as to why they wouldn't automatically do it on a school bus?
I have seen those studies.
Okay. I was just curious, because-
I'm wondering if it's like, parents are out of sight, out of mind, and they don't wear a jacket in the middle of winter, and they don't put a seatbelt on, you know, for the same reason. I have no answers. I'm just bringing up questions because after seeing that video, it became a concern.
Yeah, it's just interesting to me because I'll get in a cab in New York City with my kids, and they'll be like, Mom, aren't you going to put your seatbelt on? Like, I'm the one who actually doesn't think to put it on in a cab. But they automatically do it, so it's just surprising. So I'm wondering, I was wondering if maybe it was the harness type that was on the bus that they just didn't instinctually put it on. I could see at the elementary level, possibly, because there's so many kids, and you're fitting three to a seat, and it might not be something that's as natural. But I don't know, I think we should look at it a little bit closer, just for safety purposes. I don't think it's something, if we're going to start buying buses, just not to not get them just because they aren't going to use them, or maybe look into why they're possibly not using them. Not that I want to spend a million dollars, but I'm saying going forward on bus purchases, maybe. We purchase new buses with that in mind, and maybe promote it a little more for safety purposes. Because it's like recycling, in my mind. That once we get them in the habit of doing it, it would just become, you know, instinctual for them to do it. I don't know, anybody have any thoughts on that?
I just, I know those videos, I saw them, they were absolutely horrifying. And when you see those types of accidents, you think, why weren't they wearing their seat belts? But I have to say that our Transportation Department, if you look at our accident record, it's phenomenal. Usually, if we have an accident, it's because somebody's hitting the big yellow bus because they were driving distracted and didn't see it. The buses are designed to be, they're built like tanks, so they don't tend to have the impact. So, you know, unless you're having a rollover accident or you're hit with a much larger vehicle with the compartmentalized seating, they really are designed to keep our kids safe. And by and large, our safety record makes that happen. But I hear your point, absolutely. If I could, I would have every single child K-12 buckling up every day.
Well, maybe another option is those buses that are transporting on highways to school districts that are not, you know, or to schools that aren't in our current district. Maybe that's the starting point or something to look at.
And just asking our drivers to remind kids, hey, you do it in a car, please buckle up. And you can at least ask, and maybe with some regular reminders. I think a lot of it is peer pressure. You know, it's not cool on the bus to be buckling up. But it's really a basic safety component.
Judy, for next year, for next year's budget, would you take a serious look at, looking at, can we afford to do the three-point harnesses as well as the educational structure? We'd need to make sure that the community is onboard with understanding the need for it, as well as the education for the kids so that they get the idea that this is something they should be doing.
Yeah, we can look at that and spread the word. And even maybe in some surveys that we do, we might be able to get some feedback on that, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now, thank you, Transportation. Now it's time for Ray Nardelli with Technology.
Oh, good evening. I'm Ray Nardelli, I'm the Director of Technology here at Bethlehem. And I will present the IT budget for 2021. So looking at the big picture, as Cindy did, we'll start with the budget overview. And you'll notice the final line there, we have an increase between this year and next year of about $200,000. And there's three major reasons for that. One, I talked a couple weeks ago about privacy and security and the fact that we had a security assessment. I'll talk about that a little bit more detail. But that's one reason our budget is going up. And along with the New York State EdLa 2D regulations that are being, that we need to adhere to. We are additionally, we're going to be converting a couple of classrooms in our high school tech from a virtual environment to a physical environment. I'll talk about that in a second. And then software, instructional software. We continue to spend more money on instructional software. And that's, you know, that's a good thing because I think our teachers are using technology more. We're utilizing the Chromebooks and taking, kind of leveraging the different tools that are out there. So we try the best we can to support them. So just kind of going line by line, starting with salaries. I have a separate slide on that, so I'll talk about that in a second. Equipment, so regarding the security assessment that we had a couple, at the beginning of, well, I guess it was late fall. So the one piece of equipment that we really need to focus on is our firewalls. We have two firewalls currently. We've had them for a little over five years. And in technology years, that's a lot. So it's time to upgrade our firewalls, and these things are not cheap. They do an incredible job for us to keep our network secure. And because our network traffic continues to soar, year after year after year, we just get more, well, everybody's using the network, relying on the network. Every single bit of traffic goes through our firewalls. From all seven schools, from all, you know, O and M, transportation, everything goes through our firewall. So we are looking at upgrading our firewall to a more robust and beefier model that can handle up to four times the bandwidth that we currently have. So that'll give us a little future-proofing, too. And also, it has a much faster processor so that it can actually unlock and analyze traffic to keep us safer, to actually make sure that those, the things that do impact the network get caught and don't get through. So the other large equipment purchase that I referred to a little bit earlier is converting our technology classrooms. So we have Project Lead the Way in both middle school and high school. And in the high school, for the last, well, I think our system's about five years old. It's a virtual system. And these classes use like pretty high-end 3D modeling software. And the system that we have transports that over our network, to simplify. And that's a heavy lift. And over these years, since I've been here, it's proven to be not as reliable as we wish it would be. That frustrates the students, frustrates the teachers. So we are actually going back to a traditional computer lab where we, you know, we're not going to virtualize this software. We're going to actually install the software on a computer and put the computer in front of the student. That way, the computers and the software and the processing power is all right there instead of moving over back and forth through the network. So by outfitting three classrooms, it's a little bit of an expense. So that's part of the reason the equipment line's going up. Moving to the software line, again, talking about privacy and security. So traditionally, we all are familiar with virus protection. And you have a virus protection software that can actually, basically, it analyzes files for viruses. Well, as things move forward and criminals get smarter, and so do the protection methods. So what was called virus protection is now called endpoint security. Endpoint is a computer, a printer, a tablet. Anything that's connected to your network is considered an endpoint. And the way endpoint protection works now is it actually analyzes the processes inside your computer as things are happening. And it looks for suspicious kind of behaviors, or suspicious- or suspicious, suspicious activity. For example, so we all, we hear ransomware. And without getting too far into the weeds, ransomware, basically what happens is a bad actor puts something on your computer and it starts to lock up files. And once those files are locked or encrypted, the only way to encrypt them is by paying money to the, the criminal. Well, what endpoint protection does, it is, it notices that behavior, that okay, something's starting to happen here that's very predictable, and it stops, it cuts that process off from, from continuing. So that's just kind of a very general way to say, you know, that, that, that's what endpoint protection does. It's, it is an expensive system, but so virus protection was back in its day, so anyway. So part of the software increase is because of the purchase of endpoint protection. Another thing that we're going to be spending a little bit more money on this year is Chromebook management. So we have about 600 Chromebooks that we currently use between, Chromebooks are used from grade one all the way through 12, as you know. Many teachers use Chromebooks, aides, monitors, nurses, all kinds of people across the, the district use Chromebooks. And so we are finding it difficult to kind of manage all that, and we repair these ourselves. So we, I would say we probably complete about 75% of the repairs on any of these Chromebooks, and to manage the repairs and the parts and it's, 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 you know, it's become quite a, quite a bit of a, a process. And, and I can't even believe that next year is year number four already in this power of one thing. So I'm finishing my third year, and I came on board when we just started this, so next year will be year four. Moving down to materials and supplies, goes down a little bit based on historical data. Purchased and services goes up a teeny bit. Part of that increase is due to repairs. Like I said, we're in our, we're going to be in our fourth year of the Chromebook one-to-one program, and these are now four-year-old Chromebooks that require more repairs, so our repair budget needs to be increased a bit. Going down to the BOSI's line, so as you know, we get aid for everything we purchase through BOSI's, so we try very, very hard to funnel purchases through BOSI's so that we get that 60% aid back the following year. I mentioned the firewall earlier. Well, that's the hardware piece. Almost every piece of hardware we buy comes with licenses, licensing and maintenance costs. The licensing and maintenance for the firewalls will go through BOSI's so we can get that aid back. We're additionally, we're going to be purchasing, we're going to be moving some software down to the BOSI's line. So out of the software line, down to the BOSI's line, again, to get that aid back. On the plus side, we are, five years ago, we had a, an installment purchase plan to buy, I think it was like 12 copiers across the district. Those copiers are now five years old, and they're doing great. We don't need to replace them. So we don't need to renew that installment purchase plan at this point. So that's actually money coming off the books in our BOSI's line. Moving forward to my technology staff, so we have, I'm blessed with a, with a really great staff. I mean, for the first couple of years, we had some, of my employment, we had some empty positions, we had some movement, we had some, some challenging times, but for the last 14 months, we've been fully staffed and, and it's been phenomenal. I think by all, everything I hear, sort of anecdotally, the customer support is, is really something people appreciate, and it's really because my staff is, is, is just number one, I think. So anyway, we have a slight increase in our, in our salary line due to health insurance, life insurance, buyouts, and cost of living raise. The one thing that we are hoping to, we're asking for, hoping to, to get is currently our middle school, we do not have a, a full-time staff member in our middle school. There's 1,100 students over there, and we don't have, because of staffing and timing, we have someone there from about 11 o'clock AM till 4:00 PM every day. I could go into the details, but we also try to, we, we, we hit two elementary schools every day so that every, every elementary school gets, gets two visits from our tech support per week, and then our middle school from 11 to 4:00. So there is a current clerical position in the middle school library that is, that we have retirement for. So we are looking to convert that position into a help desk technician so that we can have full-time 7:30 to 4:00 coverage in our middle school. And now that, you know, that, they are fully one-to-one, and they have a take-home, you know, they take their Chromebooks home, and we have all the, the, the brand-new boards, the interactive touch panels in all the classrooms. There's just more and more technology that needs more support over there. So hoping that happens. My last slide is state aid. And as Cindy was talking about getting aid back, you know, the, the total here is, is almost half of my budget. So the, the money we get back in aid is, is, almost covers half of, half of the technology budget. As I said, that, that top line, I really do try as often as I can to consolidate my purchases and, and funnel them through BOSI's so that we get that 60% back. That's not always easy. It usually adds three weeks to the purchasing process, and, and that, that might not sound like a big deal, but when you're trying to make things happen, it just, it's just one of those things that, I try hard to, to coordinate that. In the yellow on the very bottom, you might remember last year, I, we presented on the Smart Schools expenditures, and we had a Phase 1 where we did buy those boards, the interactive touchboards, and put them in our high schools and, in our middle school You know, by all, by, by all accounts, that's been incredibly successful. I mean, we, we rolled those out, and, you know, we have had nothing but positive things from teachers. I wanted to do a, I wanted to have a couple of teachers here tonight to do a little presentation on, on how the boards and how they're using the boards, but this is a tight schedule. So we decided that later on in April, we're going to bring a couple of teachers in to do a presentation on how they're using those boards. I was holding my breath a little bit when it came to this whole Smart Schools process and my first time through, but I was so relieved when obviously we crossed every T and dotted every I because we got close to a million dollars back from the state in January because I guess we did everything right. So thanks to Judy and her staff and everything we did, that was a great thing. So anyway, so I'm finished. Any questions?
I could always have questions. With, with cybersecurity being a strong focus, and you were talking about the regulation, do we have a vulnerability scan that we do like on a regular basis and?
We do.
Always running in the background, making sure that nobody can get into our firewalls?
Yeah, we do. In fact, what, one thing that, that came as a result of our assessment was that we do, we do a vulnerability scan, and the list of things that need to be taken care of are generally larger than we were getting to. So now I've moved a few staff members around, a, a couple of staff who are interested in networking systems work, who weren't doing that stuff, who are now working with my, my senior network systems tech, Gary, who presented with me a couple of weeks ago. So now we have some, some additional support for Gary to close those vulnerabilities. And vulnerabilities might be, for example, systems that, that, like operating systems that are out of date, or different things that just need patching, or, and it's just, the list is pretty long, and so Gary just prioritizes it, and he now, along with two other staff members, are closing those gaps.
And just my last question on that, I don't know what your background is, but does anybody have like a CIST certification, or is there more continuing education focus on getting more cybersecurity knowledge because it's such an integral part of what we do?
Yeah, so Gary Halvidell is, he, I don't think he has any specific certifications, but from the day I walked on campus, he talked to me about wanting to focus more on cybersecurity. And so in the way that we've had staff, kind of, the responsibilities of staff work out, I've, I've been trying to give Gary more and more time to focus on this, and he has been, he is our central focus when it comes to cybersecurity. He goes to several conferences a year, and he's, that's, that's, I would say, a good 50% of what he does is focused on cybersecurity.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ray, you had mentioned that next year is the fourth year for the one-on-one-to-one. What is the plan to, to either sell and rebuy or recycle the units? How, how are we replacing them as the technology ages?
So we are full-fledged into that already. So I think, yeah, every single year, I have a, I have this pretty complex schedule that every year we buy three classes, excuse me, three classes worth of Chromebooks. So for example, I know we have to buy 1,100 Chromebooks this summer, grades nine, grades five, and I think grade three. So then next year, it'll be grades nine, grades five, and then there's another one. But every year, grade nine and grade five get a new fleet of Chromebooks, and then one other year gets, so that's how, we're going to be replenishing these over, over the course. So no, no Chromebook will ever be older than four years old. And what do we do with them once they're four years old? We haven't gotten to the point where the students have actually had one for four years, so we haven't talked about maybe, you know, options for them keeping them, or, you know, for a nominal fee, or, or I don't know. But some schools talk about that. But for example, this past summer, well, every summer for the last couple of summers, we've been retiring older Chromebooks, and we have, we, we sell them to recycling companies or, there, there's lots of different options when it comes to, to, to selling these things. So we are trying to develop a relationship with an electronics recycler that, that we can kind of count on, and they can count on us. And so we're, we've been working on that relationship. But every year, you know, we, we have sold everything from Chromebooks to, you know, old Macintosh computers to, I have five servers in my office right now that Andrew's going to, you know, put on public surplus in the next week or so, and then if, you know, if those don't sell, then we'll, we'll, they'll probably just go to recycling. But yeah, this is a, as fast as we get things in, getting things out is almost as big of a job.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks.
And I was remiss, I made a note for next year. Ray actually has $10,000 in technology asset sales that should be credited for his department's revenue. Yes, Andrew does a, a great job in putting those items up. So you're in the home stretch of the budget presentation. I know this has been a bit of a marathon for everybody. I did want to flag that we will have three board seats that are up for election this year. Christine, Holly, and Meredith's seats are all expiring. And I know an email went out, I think it was last week, announcing the availability of the petitions and how many signatures are required, 50. The petitions have to be picked up in person from Brittany Barrett, the district clerk, and then they have to be returned by Monday, April 20th in order to be on the ballot for the May 19th election. And then lastly, our future meetings. Next week, we have a one-week turnaround between our board meetings due to the break in February. We'll have O and M and athletics presenting. And then our final session will be the instructional program and special ed and student services. We'll have time to discuss all of the choices that are laid out and then make our vote to approve the budget on April 1st. And then we'll have an interim meeting where we don't talk about budget, and then May 6th we'll have the public hearing, and then move forward to meet the candidates night, and then the May 19th budget vote all day long, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And that concludes the budget presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you, Judy. Anybody have anything else they wanted to add on the presentation?
Just that I was going to say that I have the intent to run again this coming May.
And I do as well.
And I do as well. There you go.
There we go. Thank you. I almost forgot about that. Next on the agenda is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. If there are any visitors in the audience tonight who would like to speak to the board on an agenda item, now is the time, and it would include the mobile device policy that's coming up later on the agenda. So if there's anyone who would like to speak to the board, come on up.
Hi. I'm Heather Spitzberg. I have two middle schoolers. I really wanted to extend my thanks to the scheduling committee. Really, I, I know all of you know I'm very excited about this issue, and I'm really happy to hear there is consensus, more than a compromise, and I'm really looking forward to hearing the details as they move forward, but I just really wanted to say thank you. It means a lot. And I know it means a lot to people in the district, to parents. The second thing I wanted to say on the seatbelt discussion, my children, I've actually talked to them about this, and one of the, the problems they see with using the seatbelts is how much stuff they have with them and all the other students have with them. So they have backpacks, they have Chromebooks, they have their athletic bags, and, and there's nowhere to put them. And so you're cramming two or three students into a seat with all their stuff, they can't get to the seatbelts, it's hard for all three of them to fit the seatbelt around. So that might be an area where that can be looked at to try to encourage more seatbelt The third thing I wanted to say on the, the help desk technician proposal for the middle school, a full-time person, that would be really awesome if that could be accommodated. We, we really appreciate having the Chromebooks, but there have been times when issues have arisen at night, and our children have had to go to school, and they can't get their Chromebook issue addressed until later in the day. So they're effectively without their Chromebook for half the day, which really stresses my kids out, but is also just difficult for them. And finally, this is a non-agenda item. Thank you for accommodating this. Some of you may know, my family had a lost dog situation. It was very emotional. But I wanted to let you all know that Sinnerlands Elementary students and staff notified me that they had seen the dog one day, and actually I was, from that notification, able to go find the dog. And we were just so appreciative that they were looking out, and someone thought to send me a message, and the students and the staff behaved really well. They didn't scare her away or anything, and I was just really appreciative about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad you found her.
Thank you.
There we go.
Hi, I'm Kate Gaffney. I have an elementary student and a middle school student. I have three kudos to send out today. Mr. Nardelli, I saw your 2D presentation on the video, and again, I shout out for the district for allowing the board meetings to be videotaped. I was very appreciative of that, and I was so happy that the board and the district got out in front of the 2D and what's required. The regulations just came out last month, and so we really got a jumpstart on that. So I really appreciate that, and I know that we're, the work that had to go into that. The other piece I wanted to mention was the policy on the cellphones. I know that there's probably a lot of controversy or differences of opinions, but my own perspective is that my kids are in school to learn, and they can have their cellphones at the end of the school day when they need to contact parents, and so I'm very grateful that the board took this on. And finally, as you know, I've been very public about my viewpoints on start school later. I think that it is aligned with the school district's mission on wellness of students, and I am very grateful that there has been progress in the area, and I thank the committee... and I am very grateful that there has been progress in the area, and I thank the committee for its work, and I hope that we can move forward in improving in that area in the future, and just crossing my fingers that next year, 8 o'clock it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have to put on my readers. I'm Janice Witherby, I have an elementary school student, and I have notes, because I'm a horrible public speaker. As a parent, this is regards to the mobile device policy, I know that I can reach my child via the main office at any time, especially if it's an emergency. And I also know that when my child reaches middle school, after-school plans can be made or changed as soon as the final bell rings, because for six hours, the kid should be focused on what's happening within school walls. Phones are highly addictive, I'm not immune to that, hence my notes. And the outrage about not having a cellphone on children at all times, that I've heard around the school, highlights how addicted people are to the instant gratification of the dot-dot-dot from their kids. We all want to make sure they're safe, but we can't do it all day, every day. We can all be patient, we can all be flexible. I want my child to learn at a school without distraction from their phone, or another child's phone, for that matter. I want our kids to talk at lunch. I want them to understand that not everything is urgent. I want them to care about what is going on around them, rather than staring at a tiny screen. And so the small reprieve of six hours a day, where they can learn and be a kid, and not have to be a slave to their phone, is exactly what I think the school day should look like, so thank you. I fully support the new mobile device policy for K through 8, and I also encourage the board to consider how we can help high school students combat digital addiction. It's a real thing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi.
I just wanted to point out, in talking about the seatbelt issue on buses, that I feel it's not a matter of if, but a matter of when. It's something that we're seeing progressing in other states, and also addressed by Governor Cuomo in January in his State of the State address, and that budgetarily-wise, it's fiscally more responsible to implement it when the buses are being made, instead of later on, retroactively, will actually cost you more. You can look at New Jersey, and how they've actually implemented the three-point harness in their bus usage, as kind of a role model to how to implement here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, 1 through 5.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? And I'll, I'll just say that I would recognize the three donations that are on this list, and say thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, 1 through 6.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, 1 through 9.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, 1 through 3.
So moved.
Second.
And I would like to open up some discussion at this point, on the policies in particular. And I'd like to just start by recognizing the feedback that we have gotten on the policies, particularly some concern that was expressed regarding the impact of the policy on students with certain special needs. And I'd like to let the board know that I spoke with Kathy Johnston, who did advise that if there were a special circumstance that might warrant an accommodation, families should reach out to the principal, to be put in touch with the CSE chairperson, or the nurse, to arrange for an accommodation plan.
You're talking about the mobile device policy specifically?
Correct.
I mean, obviously, that's true any time, anyone needs an accommodation.
Yes, for any policy, but this is the one I'm talking about. Thank you. Sometimes I think I've said things out loud, and they're just in my head. And I also just wanted to confirm, I confirmed my understanding that students at the middle school in particular have the ability to use phones in the main office, in the nurse's office, or in the guidance office, as needed. And, so I just wanted to put those out there, and then open it up if other people would like to have discussion on this, or anything else on this agenda item.
On the mobile device policy, I fully support a mobile device policy in school. I think it's important that the kids are working towards socializing more, not having the urgency immediacy issues. I do have concerns because it's been an acceptable practice now in the school, even though it's technically not an acceptable practice, for quite some time, and there are addiction issues associated with it, and I don't know if we're necessarily taking that into consideration with the strength of the policy at maybe the middle school level, where they're not allowed to look at it during lunch, because I think it's going to be a shock for a lot of kids, and I'm not saying right or wrong, I totally agree, you know, agree that we need to move away from it. I'm not sure if we should do it in such a drastic manner, where they don't have a little transition time to know that this might be coming, versus here you have it, because I think you're going to see an increase, specialized is going to see an increase with Kathy's area, and I, I just don't think we're, we're really understanding that, I think it's going to be more severe than you think, with the students who may not even have an IEP, or they have anxiety, but it's not necessarily something that's discussed at the school level. I'm not sure if the counselors are going to be prepared with, I think, the possibility at the middle school level, you might see maybe not so much at elementary, because I don't think they necessarily have them on them at all times, but I don't know what your thoughts are on it, but I do think that there's going to be a little more at the middle school level.
So, I talked to Mike Klugman about that, and one of the questions he had was that he would like some transition time. So I know typically, when the board does a second read with a policy, it's effective, you know, within a few days, once it's posted. We would obviously send a communication out district-wide to K-8, that this is now, the board has approved it. He would like to, you know, remind kids, talk to them, prepare them, that this is coming, and obviously not the first time, there's some disciplinary consequence, but this is why we can't have these in school, so that, he would like a little bit of transition time. I mean, he didn't mention excessive amounts, but a couple of weeks, you know, to kind of prepare students, and make sure families are informed and kids are informed.
Jody, I don't think anyone is looking to do discipline on this, I think what we're looking to do is
Right.
is set a new tone.
Right.
So I think whatever the principals think is, the principal thinks is reasonable
Sure.
is, is what we should go with. I, I still go back to, with this, my daughter did not have a cellphone in middle school. She was one of the last kids to get one. She finally, well, she did, ninth grade, at some point. But she had anxiety, she got through without her cellphone. And my question, and just because my kid doesn't, doesn't mean other kids will do it the same way. But, you know, students have been going to schools for a long time, and they didn't have cellphones, it's only this recent generation, basically, that's grown up with cellphones. And I, I think that maybe a transition is fine, but I think that we have to be careful about the number of people that are allowed to have cellphones on IEP, or a special ed plan, because I'm concerned it will become like the, the therapy ferret on an airplane. You know, it, to the point where it becomes, you know, it goes overboard.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, Jonathan, because I had a daughter in high school who, who had on her 504 plan that she needed a cellphone, because she had severe anxiety. Now that is something a doctor is going to say, it's not necessarily like you saying, you know, a ferret for everybody who has anxiety. But there's also studies in school that show that kids have anxiety with APs and harder classwork, and times are different than eight years ago
Okay.
academically, and that's why we have more counselors in school. We've been hiring more counselors, because there's clearly a trend, you know, there's something that's showing that there's some mental health issues that are increasing for a variety of reasons, I don't know if it's cellphone use or not, but, so, you know, I'm with Mike on that, that I would think that we would need a transition period, and to me, and I don't know if you want to ask some psychologists or doctors, it's no different than a cigarette addiction, in some, some regards, so you have to really take that into account.
So, to clarify, Mike wasn't necessarily saying delay the board implementation?
No, no.
He just wanted to make sure that, he wants to use it as an instructional piece?
Piece, right.
Absolutely.
And that makes sense, it sounds like he's looking for a couple of weeks to
Yeah.
And I could be wrong, I could be wrong, but I think there will be more to it than just changing the policy.
What's interesting, though, is some of, if you remember, I think it was last year, Mr. Domel brought some high school students to that summer program, and the kids were not allowed to have cellphones, and they were kind of shocked that, how addicted they were to it, and how much they appreciated after the fact not having access to the cellphones.
But it was a short period of time.
It was a short period of time. It was, I think, three or four days.
Three or four days, yes.
And it, it is even more evident when it's longer. When my son did, was in college, and he traveled to Thailand, his computer broke, and he was there, his last semester was study abroad. His computer broke, he had no computer, and he's in college, and has to do all his work. And he was furious that we couldn't just ship it home, get it fixed, ship it back within a week. It took six and a half weeks to get it back to him. And at the end of it, he said to me, you know, it was the best experience of my life, I didn't realize how addicted I was to this thing, and I'm going to make sure that I don't become addicted again, and he's now very careful on screen time. So it, this is the kind of teaching opportunity that I think the, the teachers and the principals can use for the good of our students.
Yeah, sure, they'll be very happy.
I have a lot of things to say on this. I think that, firstly, I thank every parent that emailed us, because there's been more involvement on this one than almost any other policy we've ever had, so it was nice that we're, I would be stopped at CBS or somewhere, and people would be like, hey, I want to tell you about this, or, and it was, so thank you to every parent out there who added their input. I think it's useful, because it is useful to hear all the different perspectives and the what-ifs, you know, because one size doesn't always fit all. With all that said, I think the policy is wonderful, I do. As a board member last year, when we saw the, I think it was the health teachers that came and talked about anxiety, and they showed levels of anxiety, and going back to like 2012, and that's when these numbers started taking off, which is exactly when social media and cellphones and schools started taking off. There is a real correlation here. As, I'm a seventh grade teacher, I see it in my class, you see kids that just, they need to unplug, you know, and so this is awesome. And as a parent of two kids, you know, when do I see stress on my kids' faces? It's when it's, device time is over. There's a real anxiety, and I think that the stress is, is the device, like, like there is a lot of anxiety in this world, and not all of it, and we, I don't make blanket statements, that's not fair, but so much of it comes from these devices creating this stress in our life. And being able to unplug from them for a period of time is going to be a great solution. It doesn't, I understand what Christine is saying, I mean, that there is going to be a transition period, you know? The parents that say that, oh, my kid's going to be stressed out, they're probably right the first few days. They're absolutely right, that there is going to be that period where there's going to be angst, but the long-term result for these kids is going to be tremendous, just because they're all hooked on it, we're hooked on it, I'm hooked on it, you know, and the ability to unplug is awesome.
And I just had one question. In regards to how exemptions are going to be made, is that going to be spelled out on the policy, what people have to go through to?
No, I, no, and I don't think we need to, I mean, in the same way that we, there are accommodations for students with respect to other policies that are handled through either a, through an accommodation plan, through the, a health plan, through the nurse's office. I think that can be handled the same way. Does anyone else have any comments, or anything else they'd like to add?
No. Thank the both of you for, you know, getting it together and on the agenda.
Okay. That said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next on the agenda, recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors with us tonight who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item, now is Future meetings and events. The next board meeting is on Wednesday, March 4th, at 7:00 PM here at the high school, anticipating an executive session starting at 6:00. Wednesday, March 18th, at 7:00 PM here at the high school. Again, with an executive session starting at 6:00. And then the meeting following that is Wednesday, April 1st. It's kind of a funny day for a meeting. At 7:00 PM here at the high school, with an executive session starting at 6:00. And Meredith points out, just a reminder that because of the break, our next board meeting is next week. Normally, there's a week in between, but just a reminder to everybody. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who cares? Meeting adjourned.